We're going to call the meeting to order, please. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rebecca Hawthorne, and I am president of the League of Women Voters of Lake Minnetonka, Plymouth area. I'd like to welcome our candidates, our audience, and our viewers to tonight's forum. The League of Women Voters is a 105-year-old volunteer, nonpartisan organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in this forum this evening are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. It is our purpose in sponsoring such forums as this to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss face-to-face the issues that are important to you. This is a nonpartisan forum. We ask that campaign buttons or campaign t-shirts not be worn, nor signs or literature distributed in this room. Please silence your electronic devices at this time. There is no photography or video allowed during the forum. And now, I would like to introduce your moderator for this evening's forum, Patty Robles of Brooklyn Park. Patty is a member of the League of Women Voters, Brooklyn Park, Osseo, and Maple Grove.
Good evening. Tonight's forum is provided to give you the opportunity to learn about the candidates running for Orono City Council special election. The councilperson elected in this special election will serve for the remainder of the original term ending in January 2027. There is never enough time to cover all of the issues in a setting such as this. If your questions were not addressed, feel free to contact the candidate directly. The League of Women Voters posts complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. Please note, I'm going to skip that part. Candidates will be allowed an opening statement with a maximum of one minute to state their experiences, platform, and objectives. A question-and-answer period will follow the opening statements. The questions will be confined to one minute unless designated by the moderator. Opening statements will be given in alphabetical order, and questions will be answered in a rotating order. A 15-second warning will be given to the candidates. Candidates, please note your timekeepers over here, and there'll also be an auditory sound and just want to make sure you know where they're sitting. The candidates will also be given a two-minute closing statement. Candidates, please finish your statements quickly when you see the stop sign and hear the timer, or you will be interrupted, respectfully, but you will be interrupted. No reference of a personal nature will be tolerated. A person's political or public record may be examined, but not their character. This forum is made available to encourage the voting public to focus on the issues and not on personalities. We ask that there be no demonstrations in support or opposition to the candidates or their positions, and that candidates be allowed their full time to get their points across. The public has been encouraged to submit questions online in advance of the forum. For those in the audience, if you have a question, write it on a three-by-five card available from our volunteers and raise your hand to have it picked up. Audience questions will be given or will be taken for the first 30 minutes of the forum. The timekeeper will alert the moderator when 30 seconds has elapsed. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. Those that fall in the same general area may be consolidated. The candidates running for one special election seat on the Orono City Council are Ryan Knive, Bruce Limkey, Azul Gigi Simpson, John Schwangler, and Todd Tretel. Is that correct, Todd?
Todd Tretel.
Say that again?
Todd Tretel.
Tretel. Thank you.
Like pickle not nickel.
All candidates were invited to participate in this evening's forum. Candidate Ryan Knive is unable to attend but has submitted his opening statement to the moderator to be read on his behalf. So I'm going to read that now, and then we'll begin with the candidates that are present. So one minute for the opening statement. "Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight, and please accept my apologies for not being able to join you in person. While I can't be with you this evening, my dedication to our community remains steadfast. For the past 15 years, I've had the privilege of serving my community as a firefighter, all while working full-time as a captain at Delta Airlines. My family and I have lived in Orono for many years, and I'm fortunate to share this wonderful city with my wife and our three children. Through these experiences, I've gained a deep appreciation for what makes our community so special, and I am committed to helping it thrive. I firmly believe in keeping taxes low while safeguarding the unique character of Orono. As home values rise, I will explore every possible way to bring our tax rate down, ensuring we protect not only our homes but also our financial well-being. As a parent of three children, I understand how important it is to have accessible parks and open spaces for everyone. These spaces..." Sorry, that's the end of the one-minute time. It goes quickly. I do want to remind everybody to take a moment to silence their cellphones if they have not yet, and let's get started. We are going to begin with our candidates giving their introductory remarks, one minute, and we're going to start with Bruce Limkey.
Thank you. My wife Lynn and I moved into Orono about 20 years ago, and she grew up on a dairy farm in Corcoran. I grew up in St. Paul. She liked the wide-open spaces. I like the urban environment, and we got the best of both in Orono. We've also come to realize the values of the citizens and what Orono stands for: the love of natural resources, thoughtful and logical development. My experience as a landscape architect, I'm a sales guy, project manager. I was a city council member in Montrose last century sometime, and I spent seven years on the planning commission for Orono. Aside from that, I guess as kind of a bonus, I refereed high school and men's hockey for 25 years. And if, I know last Monday's thing was...
Thank you.
I can stop fights.
Thank you. Azul Gigi Simpson.
Hi, my name's Gigi Simpson, and I moved to Orono in 2017 with my family, and I am a senior in college right now, and I am also studying law, politics, and society, and I've always had a personal interest in politics, advocacy work, and community service and public service like that. And I always thought, like, well, I've been interested in local governance, and I thought starting the city council would be a great stepping stone into my career goals. And my favorite things about Orono is the nature and the beautiful things like the wildlife, and I think that my goal would be to protect those and also be transparent and...
Thank you. John Schwangler.
Hi, I'm John Schwangler, and I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Great to see the turnout. Thank you, League of Women Voters. My wife Jules and I have been living in the Orono community since 2007. I grew up in Mound, so, you know, Mound-Orono, that rivalry we had was very strong and very real. I mean, back in my day, kids from Orono would throw dynamite at us. We'd have to light it and throw it back at them. So I'm here to serve. I feel I served 11 years on the planning commission. I got to do it with Bruce and several other people, and I care about this community. I care about the Lake community. I care about the communities around us, but most importantly, I care about what's going to happen to the future with our city and want to keep going with the momentum that we have going forward with our new council and our new mayor. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Todd Tretel.
Hi, my name is Todd Tretel, and I bought a house in Orono in 2019. I've lived in the Lake area since 2012 and really fell in love with it. Things I want to accomplish as a city council member would be to provide transparency, find a resolution that works for everybody with the Navarre and Long Lake fire departments, the Public Works facility, make sure that build-out goes as smooth as possible, and to ensure that we maintain our wildlife and our great natural resources that we have here. I have a background in accounting. That's what I do for a living, and I have two small businesses. I do a boat charter on the lake, and then I do some small business accounting and then individual taxes. And so it gives me an insight to the community and what is important to us here. I look forward to serving you. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now start with questions, and you will be answering in rotating order. You have one minute for the question. What if any, oh, and we're going to start first with John Schwangler. What if any actual or perceived conflicts of interest do you have with serving on the Orono City Council?
None that I'm aware of. My time on the planning commission too, I'm in the financial services industry, have been in that for 40-plus years. I do not have any conflicts that I know of, and I'm sure they can come up, but as of now, no conflicts at all.
Thank you. Bruce Limkey.
I do not have any conflicts of interest either. I know quite a few people in Orono, and if a situation would come up where there may be a possibility of preferential treatment, I would excuse myself from making a decision or from that discussion, so.
Thank you. Gigi Simpson.
I also don't have any conflict of interest. My interest is just serving the community and representing them and representing the people because they voted me in, so, no.
Thank you. Gigi, I'm going to encourage you to speak a little louder into your mic. Thanks. Todd Tretel.
I have a million conflicts. No, just kidding. I don't have any conflicts of interest, other than I want to see Orono stay a great place to live. When you compare it to the property values of Mound, I would like to keep that lower and no conflicts of interest, and look forward to the opportunity.
Thank you. Our second question, we're going to start first with Gigi Simpson. "As of 2025, meetings have been held to restore the relationship between the neighboring fire departments of Orono and Long Lake. What do you see as next steps to promote a public safety short-term payment, or I mean short-term agreement, with a fiscally responsible long-term plan?"
I think the long-term plan or the next step moving forward is to continue what the city council has been doing in terms of listening to the public, and I think we need to follow what our citizens are, what their concerns are, and I think their input will give us the right direction in terms of what, sorry, what they, what their financial needs are and being responsible with our taxpayers' dollars and ensuring that we're not spending it verbiusly or anything like that.
Thank you. And candidates, you can always ask me to reread a question if you'd like me to. Next to answer the question is Todd Tretel.
All right. "I believe the future of the fire service in Orono should prioritize public safety, fiscal responsibility, and regional collaboration. The recent addition of the Navarre Fire Department has created tension with Long Lake and in the surrounding communities. The Long Lake Fire Department has served our area for decades. I support a thorough, transparent review of the fire service model, looking at the response times, coverage, costs, and community impact. My goal is to find a long-term solution that ensures reliable emergency services while minimizing duplication and minimizing strong, or maintaining strong relationships with neighboring departments. Public input and data-driven decisions will be the key to moving forward effectively."
Thank you. Next question, next answering the question is going to be Bruce Limkey.
Thank you. I was at the Monday meeting, which was contentious and very passionate. The majority of the discussion was based on fire department combining the two and where to go from here. I think the current administration has got a great path forward. There's going to be some bumps in the road. There's going to be some rocky things, but I really think that the combination of the two fire departments over time is going to make for a much stronger organization than either one of the separate ones.
Thank you. John Schwangler.
Yeah, thank you. I think that continuing what has been going on, the ongoing negotiations and communication with the Long Lake Fire Department, we're stronger together than we are apart. And I think the great thing about firefighters and the people who serve is their passion, and I think they all care about the safety of this community, whether it be Long Lake or Orono, the area that they serve. And in fact, they care about Wayzata and the other communities as well. And I know there's divisiveness going on now, but I think through leadership, we're able to bring those things together. It will take time. It will take patience. It will, you know, it's not a straight line, but together, we can overcome these things and essentially be a stronger unit together, whatever the name of it is, right? It doesn't matter, Long Lake Fire Department or Orono Fire Department, put my fire out, please.
Thank you. Our next question, and before we do our next question, I want to remind the candidates thank you very much for remembering not to use electronic devices while you're answering the question or any notes. You can have notes, but not policy papers or anything. We want to hear what you really think spontaneously, so thank you so much. The next question, we're going to start out with Bruce Limkey. "The Orono City Council recently adopted a code of conduct and statement of values. What are your thoughts about how this living document will address the friction and lack of transparency associated with Orono City Council in the past?"
Thank you. The code of conduct, I think, is extremely important. I went to the last meeting, and while there was some disagreement and some, a little bit of controversy, I think the respect from the city council, the respect from the audience and everything ensures and proves that it is working. I know we've had some issues in the past, and we've got some bad press on it, and we need to repair that, and I think the path forward has been set, and I think it's working.
Thank you. John Schwangler.
Yeah, I think it's sad that we need to have a code of conduct, but at the end of the day, you know, it's like what we have, the six pillars of at Orono Elementary School, right? We have these six pillars. This is how you're supposed to act. We have the code of conduct had to come into place. I think it's great. I think it's just a great reminder of, we just need, as Coach Wooden, John Wooden said, he goes, "We can disagree, but we don't have to be disagreeable." And, you know, we're going to have different points of view on things. It doesn't have to be a personal, and it doesn't have to be a right or wrong. It's just, that's my opinion on that. And I think together, we can work through those and get over those parts and come together because part of what we're trying to do in these communities and even within Orono itself is come together on what we can agree on.
Thank you. Todd Tretel.
Yes, I think the code of conduct obviously gives a good baseline. It outlines how council members should act and serve the community. We have 14 communities that touch Lake Minnetonka, and Orono is probably the biggest one as far as population and area, and we need to take a leadership role, and we need to set a good example. And that starts with the citizens, it starts with the council members, it starts with the mayor, it starts with Public Works, it starts with everybody that is involved. And I'm glad that we have that. I'm sad that we needed it, but you can't change the past, and we're going to do better going forward.
Thank you. Gigi Simpson.
Personally, I'm glad that there is a code of conduct. Of course, I am not happy, of course, with the situation that led up to having this, but I think that it's a great thing to have, like, clear guidelines for city council members that they should know and uphold as that position, and also for the community to know what should be expected of us as well. And I think that we have seen that meetings have benefited from that, and I think we just need to continue following through that and keep holding people accountable.
Thank you. The next question, we're going to start with Todd Tretel. "What is your top priority for Orono as a candidate for city council, and how will you address it if elected?"
Yes. As a, my top issue is definitely getting a resolution that works for everybody with the fire department situation. I know rather that we just entered into the short-term agreement, but we need to have a long-term agreement. Additionally, with that, I want to make sure that we are planning our changes and updates, not waiting till a facility breaks or a truck breaks. We can repair it for much cheaper cost with proactive spending and budgeting. And I would also like to maintain our rural feel that we have out here and all of our, again, the natural resources. I absolutely love the birds, the bike trails, the trees, the lake, the fish, you name it, I love it. So keep Orono as it has been, a very good community to live in.
Thank you. Gigi Simpson.
I feel like one of my top priorities is definitely strengthening the council's relationship with the community and trying to rebuild that relationship and rebuild that trust, and also making sure that the community feels heard in the decisions and that the council is open to that. And I think that will go a long way in trying to find a solution with these current, like, situations and decisions that we need to, and I think that will also make it more efficient and actually move along the process as well.
Thank you. John Schwangler.
Yeah, I think Gigi said it, I mean, the key word here is trust, and I think with the new administration that we've had the last several months, you see that trust being re-earned, right? But it takes a process. It takes a while. We've got to keep on building on that trust, and we keep on doing it through, you know, having civilized council meetings, right? Being able to hear everyone's point of view and be able to listen and not to yell. And I think that whole trust issue will get built over time, and it keeps on building on that. But we've got to earn it. We have to earn it. It's not given. And I think we really need to keep the communication going would be very key with that, and I think that helps build the trust. So if we can keep that, the communication involves that transparency, and keep on going forward with that. And I love the momentum we have. Let's keep it going.
Thank you. Bruce Limkey.
I've got two priorities. One is to maintain the lifestyle of Orono. It's a great area for people, a great living environment. The second one, in 20, well, starting this next winter, there's going to be a work on a new comprehensive plan, 2030 to 2050. It's called Imagine 2050, and I want to get input from the community, not just the people that want to get up and talk because they may like to hear themselves talk, but the people, the silent majority. It would be great to do a survey of people, asking them questions, what do you want to see? What do you want to see Orono, where do you want to see it go? So I want to listen, I want to listen, I want to listen, I want to get feedback from people.
Thank you. Our next question, we're going to start with Gigi Simpson. "As a council member, you influence land use decisions, both with respect to specific developments and with larger policy decisions on how land will be held back from or slated for future development. What principles will guide your decision-making?"
My, what's going to help me guide my decisions with that is reminding myself that I need to keep the best interest in the people who voted me in and, well, just for the overall community, and making sure that I am responsible with their money, and then also making sure that the new development is beneficial and, you know, not necessarily just needed, but, you know, it's going to help grow our community and that we're gaining something in it, you know, in return, you know.
Thank you. Todd Tretel.
Would you please repeat the question?
You bet. "As a council member, you influence land use decisions, both with respect to specific developments and with larger policy decisions on how land will be held back from or slated for future development. What principles will guide your decision-making?"
The principles that will guide my decision-making are the ones that have been in place. We have some land that's maybe been trusted to the city or the state or some other type of organization that's not to be developed. And while I understand that development does bring in revenue, it brings in more opportunity with more people, part of what makes this community what it is is the fact that it's not populated super heavily. This is not Plymouth. This is not Eden Prairie. We're not stacked up on top of each other, and there needs to be a balancing act with that. Not everybody's going to be happy, but we need to come to an agreement where we can all live with it, compromises, truly what we'll have to do, and also protecting our wildlife and our lakes, rivers, and streams. Like, that's very important to me.
Thank you. John Schwangler.
Yeah, I think this is a big part of what we have here in Orono and what's going to continue to happen. 2007, when I moved here, I had additional two acres of land. I was told that's the only, you know, largest lot of land between where I live and downtown Minneapolis. Well, then the Dayton property comes up, and these things continue to come up, right? We don't see, foresee those things happening. When I was on the planning commission, Bruce, and I think you were on there at the time, we had the Lakeview Golf Course, which was, you know, a tough thing to develop, and I grew up playing golf at Lakeview. All my teachers worked there. It was a big part of my life growing up, and, but also at the same time is you got the owners of it, and they're losing money. And, you know, no one stepped up to help buy the property or the golf course and keep it going as it was. I hated to see that leave. But we've got a nice community there, and that's, you know, things like that are going to happen. I'm not saying like, and I don't, can't project out where, when, or how they're going to happen, but it's taken out, you know, the owner.
Thank you. Bruce Limkey.
There's been so many decisions, regulations, recommendations by the council, previous councils, previous planning commissions that are set in place. They've done a wonderful job of that over the years. And in being on the planning commission, I realized how insightful all of those decisions were, and we've got a lot of good things in place, and I think to continue those, the knowledge that John and I have from being on the planning commission, I think is also invaluable for making decisions along those lines.
Thank you. The timekeeper has signaled that 30 minutes has elapsed, ending the time for new questions from the audience. We'll proceed with our next question, and Bruce Limkey, you'll be answering first. "What are your views regarding affordable housing in Orono?"
That is a great question. People say that's a great question because they don't know how to answer, but that is a great question. I think it's important that we do have affordable... I think it's important that we do have affordable housing. It should be not just in the cities or in some of the minor suburbs or anything, but we need to address that issue. It hasn't been addressed, I think the Met Council has been putting pressure on us to do that, and we need to find a solution. The issues are, a development out here is expensive, the land is expensive, and it's a real, real tough time to, to have affordable housing, but I think it's something that we really have to come to terms with and address.
Thank you. John Schwengler?
Yeah, I agree with Bruce, I think that's an interesting question. You know, it's gonna, and I don't really know the answer to it, but it's something that, as it comes up and Met Council, you know, drives these things, given a density issue and given where it is, you know, wanting to see that in that, especially if we have a new comp plan coming up here, looking at those things, so it's finding out where it's going to go, how is it going to go, what's it going to look like? I think that's a long discussion, it's going to take a lot of probably city council hangovers the next day after long meetings. It, I just, you know, it's going to be what it is and we'll address it as they come along.
Thank you. Gigi Simpson?
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
Sure. What are your views regarding affordable housing in Orano?
Once again, I feel like that is a difficult question to answer. A little bit, but I would just say that I do prioritize it for sure. I think Orano is known for having a diverse type of lifestyles and types of families. And I definitely think that it's important to accommodate like all of our people, all of the residents in Orano. I know for myself and my family, like that is important. I, being on the city council, I'd be, I am definitely interested in getting to learn more about that and learn more from my council members. And currently, I don't have too many ideas, but that's something definitely that I'm interested to learn more about and also hear more from the community about.
Thank you. Todd Triton?
Yes. Affordable housing in Orano is not just an Orano conversation, it is the other 13 communities that share this area with us. There's a, the market has determined that this is a, not a cheap place to live in a general, in a, in a general sense. And while that is how capitalism works, not everybody's meant to live in every spot of the state. Now, I'm not saying that we need to keep them out, but do we need to, how much bending do we do? I know it's maybe a little bit more of a conflicting view than most people would have, but also I am a fan of picking yourself up by your own bootstraps type of a mentality. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we're going to start with Todd Triton. What do you see as the greatest challenge to starting and/or growing a business in Orano? What, if anything, should the role of city government be in supporting businesses?
City government should be supporting small businesses, we have several in this area. I mean, you drive up and down the main, the main, the, the main streets and you don't see the major corporations, you see all small, all small businesses. It's, I, I think what's, what's being done is working, can it be, can it be better? Possibly. But if it's not broke, don't try to fix it. And I would say the biggest challenge, at least in my experience with my small businesses, is getting word of mouth out there, maybe it's because I'm an accountant and not a marketer, but trying to help them be able to get their ideas and their services out to the community to help benefit everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Gigi Simpson?
I think, sorry, can you repeat?
Sure. What do you see as the greatest challenge to starting or growing a business in Orano? And what, if anything, should the role of city government be in supporting businesses?
I definitely think that the city council should be supporting small businesses. I think when we talk about like development and improving the city, that we should also be thinking about our residents and their small businesses and seeing how they can contribute. I, I know just an example is from like the fire department and the store type of maintenance and how it's kind of selective on who can actually provide the services. And I think like when we're doing projects, maybe looking to small businesses. Sorry, and then.
Okay. Bruce Limkey?
There are a few small businesses in Orano, there aren't enough. We have some empty storefronts that need to be filled. And I guess that's one challenge, how do you attract businesses into the area? Second chan, challenge is, we're very limited in terms of where businesses can start and the size of the businesses. So I think the challenges are lack of area and also just, we need to fill up the storefronts that we already have also. That was a very good question.
Thank you. John Schwengler?
That was a very good answer, Bruce. You know, again, one of the things about Orano is we're a big residential community. There isn't a lot of commerce going on here. We've got Navarre, we've got certain parts here in Long Lake. So it's, it, the kind of business we can attract and fill some of those vacant spots is, you know, it, it's going to be a smaller type business, right? So you, whatever that is, we can do. One of the great things is, is, you know, most people who live in Orano are commuting, well, they did until COVID came along, now everyone works out of their house a lot more. But you're commuting to other communities, whether it's downtown, whether it's to Edina, whether it's to Wayzata, whether it's, you know, where there are bigger communities for businesses that are being run. And then, you know, small businesses, someone's got a great idea in a small business, we should do whatever we can to help them and let capitalism run its course.
Thank you. Next question, we're going to start with John Schwengler. And the question is, please explain your views on city budgeting and how tax rates should be set when our property values continue to increase?
Well, on the city budgeting, you know, you're looking at revenues and expenses and we've got certain issues that are going to be very capital intensive. We're running a business here that is very capital intensive, whether it's roads, sewer, safety, it's a big issue, and I think it's probably the hardest thing we have to deal with as a council, is getting that budget and working closely with, collaborating with the staff on that. And then again, you know, we've been in this hockey stick area where, you know, values have keep going up. And so at some point in time, we haven't in the last several years, brought down taxes, lowered that, that levy rate. And who knows what's going to happen with, you know, the current administration that we have, nationally, what things could do. And I think at some point in time, you know, property values will be coming down or, or at least, you know, staying constant. And we'll have to deal with it.
Thank you. Bruce Limkey?
Over the last, I don't know, three, four years, the mill rate has remained constant, but the value of homes has gone up. And because of that, we've got more revenue into Orano. I would like to see the mill rate go down. I think we've overspent where we should be overspent, the new public works, the fire department. And I think that being put in the past, hopefully we can lower the mill rate and lower taxes to all the people in, in Orano.
Thank you. Todd Triton?
As, as property values rise, I believe the city budget and tax levy should not automatically increase. Higher property values already generate more revenue at the existing levy rate. So we must be careful, so we must carefully evaluate actual needs before increasing taxes as support a fiscally responsible approach, prioritizing essential services, infrastructure and long-term planning, while minimizing the tax burden on residents. Any budget increases should be transparent, data-driven and clearly tied to tangible community benefits. My goal is to, is to ensure efficient use of taxpayer dollars while maintaining the high quality value of life in Orano.
Thank you. Gigi Simpson?
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
Sure. Please explain your views on city budgeting and how tax rates should be set when our property, property values continue to increase?
Yes, okay. So I personally, I agree with what was said and I agree that our city budget needs to be, not necessarily can be determined by the property values. As we've seen, like, you know, they've grown quite a bit even a very short time. And that doesn't accurately represent where our city is at and we need to be kind of looking what our needs and priorities are as a city and not expand our budget to the point where, you know, where we have gone in the past, we're spending money, where we haven't fully mapped out what we're going to do with it. And people have kind of seen that and experienced it being a little, you know, over-expending and it's been ineffective and kind of wasteful.
Thank you. Next question, we're going to start with Todd Triton. Two major expenditures, expenses tied to the creation of the new fire department as well as the over-budget expenses of the new Orano Public Works Building, have raised concerns regarding cities, the city council's ability to responsibly manage city budgets and funds. How will you respond to these concerns?
I think the best way to address any, any infrastructure or community services, like the fire department and what the Public Works Facility provides, is through proactive planning, regular assessments and transparent budgeting. We need to prioritize projects based on safety, efficiency and long-term cost savings. We need to find a, with that in mind, we need to find a long-term solution for both of those and we need to be looking not just at this year, next year or the year after, but 10, 15, 20, 30 years down, down the road. As the population continues to expand, I would anticipate that we will have a higher population density here. Are we able to serve those new residents in 2035, 2040? It may not seem like a big deal now, but if we don't make proper planning choices now, we will be paying the cost much higher then. Thank you.
Thank you. John Schwengler? Would you like me to reread the question?
Yeah, would you please?
Two major expenditures, expenses tied to the creation of the new fire department as well as the over-budget expenses of the new Orano Public Works Building, have raised concerns regarding the city council's ability to man, to responsibly manage city budgets and funds. How will you respond to these concerns?
Well, part of it is, we've got these, both these things here now, we can't unring that bell, right? So how do we manage it going forward? And I think we're doing things right now with the fire department, trying to look at how do we, you know, merge those two together? What does that look like? Do you have duplication of services, duplication of costs? You know, efficiently do that. And it might be some short-term pain right now for long-term gain on that. What to do in the, you know, public works department and any other kind of big expenditure coming along forward that this council or the next council will look at is, we need to get public input on it and do an assessment of what we need. And, you know, from my understanding is, and everything I've seen and read, you know, the last, on the public works department was, it really wasn't done with any public input, but it also wasn't done with really a needs assessment and where we need to, what size do we need, what would it be efficient to do?
Thank you. Bruce Limkey?
I believe that the, the two major decisions that were made over the past few years were not the best decisions. And I think everything, a lot of people have realized that, and especially the new administration. I think we can learn from our mistakes. I don't think we're going to go down that road again. I think we're going to get the, the impact of citizens to tell us what we need to do, where we need to go, what we need for facilities. And I'm confident that we're not, it's not going to happen again.
Thank you. Gigi Simpson?
Well, and for me to address those concerns, although I've already said this before, but honestly, is just listening to other people's concerns and their input, which is something that was lacking from when those decisions, decisions were made and, you know, this current decisions that we have to make now, that, that has led us to this point. And I think that we also need to be pretty transparent and open when we're making these decisions. And, yeah, I just think that the public needs to be more involved and so that they have a voice and a say, so they feel like that they are in a way making these decisions as well.
Thank you. Our next question, we're going to start with Gigi Simpson. How and when should the city council obtain and consider community input regarding major city decisions, including at city council meetings? How and when?
Yeah, I've heard the debate of when a public comment should happen during this meetings, and I'm not quite sure about that. I'm not sure what's the most efficient and what's the best way necessarily to make sure that's heard. But I think that can be decided through input and people who are speaking to us. And I think just keeping in mind, like, like why you're voted in and continuously reaching out to people, whether that means like after meetings, like going and talking to people, being like open and like, you know, like if there is a big, like, situation like what we have, maybe be willing to host like a public forum or something like that, you know, something extra where it can be more than just what's on the meeting agenda.
Thank you. Todd Triton?
Yes, we are living in 2024 and most people have internet. I would have a webpage, so I'll give you kind of a backstory here. So it's April 2025, we have a facility or something that needs to be replaced in 2026. Now is the time to start planning for that. Send out flyers to, through the, through the mail to go to this, to go to a city website, answer a set number of questions, and then also have open-ended questions for further, for further input and, and, and I, and ideas. We didn't think of everything the first time, someone in the community might have a great idea to add to that. And send out a couple, you know, send out a couple of reminders, maybe it goes for a three-month period. And get this public's input in it in a very efficient and effective manner.
Thank you. John, John Schwengler? Did you want me to reread the question?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
How and when should the city council obtain and consider community input regarding major city decisions, including at city council meetings? How and when?
You know, I think the change from the, having the public comments at the end of the meeting to the front of the meeting, I think is an important thing. You know, holding people hostage till the end to make those public comments, I think it's the right thing to do is have them upfront. And, you know, get some lively discussion at times and you get, but that's the, the forum to do that. I said in previous answer, I think, you know, if there are big decisions to be made, we need to go communicate that to the public, maybe hold open meetings to do that and discuss that. One of the great things about Orano is, is that this is a community that with, and I'm looking out over to some of the people here that I know, we've got a lot of talented people here that maybe might have input and might be able to use their professional way to help solve some of these issues. So, yeah, and look at it differently with a different set of eyes and be open to that. So.
Thank you. Brad Limkey? How and when?
I hate to do this, but I agree with.
I'm sorry, Bruce Limkey, I'm sorry about that. I called you the wrong name, but I corrected now, Bruce Limkey.
Do I get more time then?
Yeah, sure, right. You get the same amount of one minute.
I'll give you my time.
I, I hate to, to agree with John, but I really do, about changing the, the input at the beginning of the meeting, rather, at the end, it, it makes all the sense in the world. One thing I would also like to see is the ability for people to. One thing I would also like to see is the ability for people to email in questions, text questions, something like that, that could be read at the beginning of the meeting also. I don't see any, anything happening like that, but I think that would be a good idea.
Thank you. Bruce Limkey, we're going to start with you. Lake Minnetonka and the public lands of Orano currently face significant environmental threats that have accompanied the growth of residential and commercial development over the last seven decades. What steps will you take to address these challenges and protect the integrity of Lake Minnetonka and Orano's public lands while balancing the needs of local residents and businesses?
Well, as I mentioned before, I think a lot of the regulations, recommendations, laws, rules are in effect, and they've been tried and true for a number, for a number of decades, and I think we need to enforce those. I don't, I think, unless there's an extenuating circumstance, we don't really need to do as much variance as we may have in the past, but I think we've got plenty of safeguards in place right now, and I would just like to see those continue.
Thank you. John Schwingler.
Could you reread the question, please?
Lake Minnetonka and the public lands of Orano currently face significant environmental threats that have accompanied the growth of residential and commercial development over the last seven decades. What steps will you take to address these challenges and protect the integrity of Lake Minnetonka and Orano's public lands while balancing the needs of local residents and businesses?
Yeah, so, as I mentioned, I grew up in Mound, so I grew up on Lake Minnetonka, we grew up on Cookspay. Lake Minnetonka has been a big part of my, has been a part of my whole life. It's been a special place for me. The minute I get on that lake, it's like, everything just kind of is right in the world. And I think we've got to continue to do that. I've seen changes. When I lived in Mound, we could take a 12-foot lumacraft with a 3.9 and go from my house to Big Island and back, and do it all the time. You can't do that these days. So, the lake has changed, the boats have changed, the property values keep going up. So, I mean, as a property owner on the lake, which I don't live on the lake, I mean, it's, you've got those fine balances going on, but also, they're not making any more lakes here, but we're also not making any more lakes. And that, being able to keep Lake Minnetonka and make it more, as best we can, for the next generation, make it better than what it was. So, it's a tough task, but I think it's something we can do.
Thank you. Gigi Simpson.
I definitely think that, you know, it's important that we are enforcing, like, regulations and holding people accountable, and I think, like, a way to, like, kind of help preserve and also protect the lakes and environment, while also keeping in mind, like, the interests of the residents and small businesses, is to encourage those businesses who, you know, want to have businesses that are going to help our community, and also going to be, you know, sustainable, and kind of incentivize that, and also ensure that we're keeping, upholding those regulations that are in place.
Thank you. Todd Trital.
I deeply value Orano's natural resources, our lakes, which is like Long Lake and Minnetonka, but trails, parks, and open spaces are what make this community so special. Preserving and protecting these assets is a top priority for me. I believe in responsible stewardship that balances access and enjoyment with long-term conservation. As the area continues to grow, we must ensure that development is thoughtful and doesn't compromise the beauty and health of our environment. I support policies that will protect water quality, maintain public green spaces, and enhance recreational opportunities for all residents while preserving Orano's natural character for future generations.
Thank you. Next question, we're going to start with John Schwingler. How should the city council obtain and consider community input regarding development of Orano's parks and recreation facilities?
Well, you know, that's a great question. You know, one of the great things we have here, we have a lot of different parks around the different parts of the community, and some have been developed differently, and, you know, each one has its own character, and each one has its own charm, and everyone has its own needs. I mean, some are more, you know, I coached baseball at Hackberry for years, I coached, you know, we started putting in flag football there a couple of years ago, 10 years ago now, I guess, and, you know, just being in those communities, being in that area there, you know, you got that balance there, and a great, like I said, I grew up in Mound, we used to ride bikes over to the different parks and play baseball, and it was a community gathering spot. Here with our, you know, we've got Baker Park right here, we've got great communities, we've got the Lake, Big Island Park, and so just keep maintaining those pristine, but also looking at what we have to do in the future, too.
Thank you. Bruce Limkey.
Can you repeat the question?
You bet. How should the city council obtain and consider community input regarding development of Orano's parks and recreation facilities?
One thing I would, I mentioned it before, I would love to see a survey sent out to all the Orano residents to tell us how we're doing, to tell us where we should go from here, and that could be a definite portion of the things, how are the parks being developed? Are there enough parks? Do we need better signage, whatever? We, I think the park that I use the most at least once a week is a dog park, which I think is just fantastic. It's expensive, I lose four, maybe five tennis balls every time I go up there, but it's well worth the effort, and I would just like to see some, some input from people in terms of a survey.
Thank you. Todd Trital.
Would you please repeat the question?
How should the city council obtain and consider community input regarding the development of Orano's parks and recreation facilities?
I'm going to stick with my flyers and have a survey webpage that has canned questions for, you know, multiple-choice answers, and then also has open-ended questions, so we can get the input of community members that the, that the initial questions did not answer. I think maybe stopping out at a busy, at a busy day at a park, and just talking to people, what do you like? What don't you like? What would you like to see different? Is a bathroom necessary, even like a, like a outhouse that we have at, or I guess, we don't have it, but Spring Park does at Thor Thompson. Getting the community's input to do things like that, to make them better with the survey, and then also by walking around on some busy days. Thank you.
Thank you. Gigi Simpson.
Yeah, I definitely think that we need to have the community's input when we are deciding, like, developing parks, or, you know, just reconstructing them. I think if we look and need to look at, like, what is more needed, and what is more like, or wanted within, like, certain, like, within communities, and look at more for those locations, and then, rather than, like, doing, getting rid of something that people like, or getting, you know, developing the environment or the natural park that was there, I think it's more important to see if it's serving the community's needs, and making sure that it's going to be utilized.
Thank you. This is going to be our final question, and then we'll have closing statements. We're going to start with Todd Trital. Please give examples of how you have been able to work productively with those who do not share your opinions.
Well, that happens all the time in corporate America. We don't always see eye to eye, so plenty of experience there, and even with my dad, we don't always see eye to eye. Imagine that. You need to listen to the, to the, to the other person. The people who have the opposing views of you, you need to truly listen. You need to, you need to let them say their statements, get their comments out, don't cut them off, don't, don't interrupt, and then calmly explain your points of view, and then see, maybe, maybe you each have three, four points of view, but one or two of them are the same. All right, great, we're halfway there. And let's find a resolution that works for everybody. Generally, a compromise means that nobody's happy, but nobody's really that hurt, so that's what we need to do.
Thank you. Gigi Simpson.
Well, like when I introduced myself, I said that I was interested in politics, so I have definitely, like, have been exposed and value listening to other perspectives and different ideologies from mine, and I think I've learned a lot from other people in learning, like, like a broader overall view, and I, I think that's really important, and I feel like it'd be ignorant for me to think that I'm right and other people are wrong all the time, and I think that was something that the last city council kind of failed, like, they didn't have enough perspectives and different ideas in those decisions, and I think having people that can, you know, debate you, I guess, and, you know, that helps you find what the best route is and actual solution.
Thank you. Bruce Limkey.
I'm a sales guy, and I've, my two biggest accounts are Disney and Universal Studios. They're, it's not always gone smoothly, there's been some bumps in the, in the road. People haven't been happy about what we've done, what I've done, but you listen to the people, you feel what their pain is, you solve their problem, and you move on, and after that, they become your best customers for life, and that works for me. I've also been married to Lynn for 26 years, and I've learned an awful lot there about conflict and compromise, and I think that's maybe been my biggest lesson.
Thank you. John Schwingler.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things I said originally was, is that we can disagree, we don't have to be disagreeable, and, you know, we're going to have to come in with different, you know, for me, one of the most expensive things is a closed mind, and contempt prior to investigation, there's always two sides here, let's look at them, let's discuss it. I think at the end of the day, people want to be heard, and I think that's where the public comments come in, but people want to be heard, don't have to agree with them, they just want to be heard. And, you know, one thing is, I've learned with my wife is, is that when she is right, I promptly admit it, and I think that has helped, and we need to work together, but there's ways to come together. It's always, you know, Bruce said he's in sales, Gigi's a student studying politics, I mean, that's, Todd's running small businesses, you know, there's always conflict, but there's ways to overcome that conflict that everybody can win.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to call on you for your closing statements, and we're going to start first with Gigi, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
I just wanted to say thank you for coming, and it's been great to see all of you guys, and, like I said, I was at school, but I came down here, or came up, I guess, to Minnesota for this forum, and also to go door-knocking and getting to meet more of you, and getting to hear from the community, and I, if I get elected, I just can't wait to learn more, and I, well, I am going to, I, I'm running, sorry, and promise to be, like, promise to be transparent and be honest, and continue to be open-minded and eager to learn and continuing to grow, and, yeah, I just think that this would be a great stepping stone, and also just a great way for me to give back to my community and be more involved and a part of it, and, because it's been giving me a lot, and has provided me a lot of support and comfort, and I want to give back now as an adult, and try to help lead our community into a better path and a stronger future.
Thank you. John Schwingler.
You know, again, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight, appreciate that, the League of Women Voters, thank you very much for putting on this forum, and one of the things I think of is, I go back to the five Cs for this, community, compassion, you know, going back, people want to be heard. What would I write here? You know, it's, this is very nerve-wracking up here, but collaboration, that, common sense, operating on a common sense basis, to have that common sense to govern. You know, one of the things is, in the, on that communication part, there is that transparency, that's where the transparency comes in, and community, not only the Orano community, the Lake Minnetonka community, the other communities around us. We're not an island. We need to make decisions that affect and help all of us together, and going back to the, on the last question is, is that if we all agreed on everything, you know, one person wouldn't be needed, we'd only need one person. So, you know, having that points of view, having different ways to look at things, having that open mindset, is how we grow this community, how we keep on going forward in a positive way, we keep that momentum that has been established, and it keeps it going. But I think those five Cs are key, and I got them right here, community, communication, collaboration, compassion, and, and most important, common sense, and, you know, treat each other like adults, and be the adults in the room, and that's what I believe we're doing here in the, as, in public service, and Jim Ramsden always says, you don't have to be in public service to be a public servant, so.
Thank you. Todd Trital.
I want to thank Patty for reading questions multiple times for us. I want to thank Gigi, John, and Bruce for coming out and tolerating me coming in at the last minute. My dog took a little longer than I had hoped. But again, I'm looking to help serve the community of Orano, and it's not just Orano, that's first on my, on the list, but there's also the other communities that we impact, we need to work together. Again, we have the short-term agreement with the fire departments that needs to have a long-term resolution, the Public Works Facility, in the same manner, that's had some fiscal challenges, and my experience as an accountant doing budgeting, forecasting, financial analysis, you name it, I can bring a fresh, a fresh perspective in, into that. And I like to think that I'm a unique individual, as are all of you, and I can bring my ideas, my talents, and my ability to listen, to help serve, help serve the community. And I want to thank all of the people in the audience for coming out, and the League of Women's Voters for putting this on. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Limkey.
I want to thank everybody, like everybody else did, for coming out. I think it's really encouraging that we have this many people showing up for one council seat. I think it's encouraging that we've got five people running for that seat, and it's encouraging that young people are getting involved. I'd love to see that, you don't see enough of that. You may not notice this, but I'm probably the oldest person up here. I consider myself upper-middle age, but I believe that with age comes wisdom, and I think I've got some wisdom, I think I've got a lot of experience, a lot of different background pieces that can be a great asset to the city. I, I'd like to be a hands-on council member, and when I was on the council in Mount Rose, we did not have a public works division, we were the public works people. We cut the grass, we emptied the sewer pond, all that kind of stuff, and I'd really, I learned a lot from that, and I would really love to continue that throughout if I'm elected. One thing, I went to the meeting last Monday, and after the meeting, a couple people said, are you sure that you really want to run? And I just, I am more sure than ever. It was, it was a passionate meeting, it was exciting, it was actually, from my standpoint, sitting out there, it was fun, maybe not so much for Bob and the rest of the people, but I enjoyed it, and I think that's, that's an important piece. I would encourage people to contact me, I've got a website, votebrucefororano.com. I am having coffee every Thursday from 7:30 till 9:00, and please contact me if you have questions, want a yard sign, want a hockey card, anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Before concluding the Orano City Council Special Election Candidate Forum, I want to express our thanks to those who have made this forum possible. First, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, please join me in thanking the- First, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, please join me in thanking the candidates for being part of the democratic process by running for office and being willing to serve our community. And it is true, it's nerve-wracking up there, and y'all did a great job. Uh, thank you also to the League of Women Voters volunteers, our audience here, and those viewing this event, um, virtually, for your participation in this candidate forum. Thank you to the city of Orano for supporting this event and for live streaming and recording tonight's forum. On-demand viewing can be, um, assess, acc- accessed, sorry, but at, um, www.lwvlmpa.org and at HTTPS colon forward slash, forward slash, www dot oranomn dot gov forward slash six-five-four forward slash public dash meetings. I'm sure it's gonna be on the, I'm sure it's gonna be on the TV. And go under special events. In other words, go to the Orano, um, government site, city government.
Can you repeat that, please?
And look under special events. Um, please remember to vote in the May thirteenth election by absentee ballot or in person at the Orano City Hall. Early voting is already underway at Orano City Hall. Extended hours include Saturday, May tenth, from nine AM to three PM, and Monday, May twelfth until five. Election Day voting will be held at Precinct One, Long Lake Fire Station, Precinct Two, Council Chambers, and Precinct Three, Calvary Church. Please check the Secretary of State's Poll Finder at Secretary of State's website if you are unsure of your assigned precinct. Remember, your voice, or your vote is your voice. League of Women Voters welcomes new members, both men and women, at, um, the website. Uh, thank you again, and good night.